Coming to you straight from the Rio Grande and beyond, and beyond. Broadcasting to the four corners of the globe. So grab your seat, your coffee, or your sundowner.
Okay, everybody, here we go.
On point, as always. This is Gloves Off. Gloves Off. Gloves Off is always on point. Bringing you the best on current issues, community affairs, and the happenings around us. This segment of Gloves Off is brought to you by the best. So pay them a visit, check 'em out. This is Gloves Off.
Glad you're Gloves Off, and today we have Webb County Commissioner John Gallo, the great, great representative of our county.
Morning, Webb County.
How's it going?
Good, yeah.
How's everything? You're up again in election season, right?
Yeah, coming around fast.
So, we're here, let's go ahead and touch base a little bit on why did John Gallo want to go into politics? What motivated you to step up to the reins and say, "You know what? I don't want to throw my name here, and I'm gonna try to do what happened"?
Well, I mean, it really came up one morning. My wife was complaining about something, and she just basically said, "You know, put up or shut up." And I said, "You know, I think I can do it." And so that's when I ran for city council the first time. You know, I had been on some boards and commissions, different things before, and I said, "You know, I think I can make an improvement on this thing, and make life better for Webb County." And so it worked out, it worked out well.
And you were a city councilman at first, right?
For eight years, uh-huh.
Now, what changed in your area when you went into the city council? And what changed? And when you left, you could say, "You know what? This is what I did, this is..."
Well, fiscal responsibility. It was just, I think, the fiscal house, we got it back in order. It was a time of a lot of turmoil when I got in, and we went to a couple of city managers, very reminiscent of what's going on now, and then we got stabilized. Betty Flores was the mayor, very good leadership there, and I think we had a good council that, you know, people, I think, wanted to do the right thing. You know, some people have different expertise and different things, and so we gelled pretty good. Like I say, we really worked hard on getting our fiscal house in order. And I remember when I left office at the time, I think we had like $100 million in bonding capacity, we had surpluses in different areas and stuff, and so it was, it was a good feeling. We were able to build the arena, and that was a really important part of my life, which is something that I was against beginning, believe it or not. And actually turned around and became a very good proponent of it, even made commercials for it.
Has the arena now, what do you think, has it changed that area of Laredo? Do you think so?
It's changed that area of Laredo, you know, and it's also changed a lot of lives, I think, of the kids, you know. We knew it was never gonna be a muddy maker, you know. I was flabbergasted that hockey even, you know, came in while we said, "You know, hey, we got a tenant that's fine, that it took off so well." You know, it was unfortunate that it just didn't, you know, I think the whole league kind of fell apart. But, you know, it was great, just to see the people enjoy, the people that have never gone. Like I said, my wife used to be a teacher, and I had gone on a field trip with her one time, and some of these kids had never even been to the mall. You know, I said, "So, we have to be able to expose our children to different things to be able to let them dream, you know, dream big."
Oh, you're absolutely correct. And the last, I'll obviously say this, the last part of innocence that we have in our society is our youth, and we have to protect them.
I believe it, since we have.
You know what I'm saying? So we have to protect them at all costs, and we have to give them the best. And if it's, if it's our struggle to, you know what, we take off our shirts for them, we do it, at any given moment.
You know, we always promote the libraries and things like that, and a lot of people, you know, can get that through reading, but some kids are just visual, and when they see that, whether, you know, the ice skating, or the Harlem Globetrotters, or a magic show, or a concert, whatever it may be, you know, it just makes them get that much more dream and know there's things out there that they can accomplish.
Absolutely. Now, when you left office, you stayed out for a while, and what...
Well, I ran for mayor, and I'm successful. You know, at the time, we were going through an adoption, and we were very successful in that, in that thing, and so it was a blessing. Did it hurt? Of course it hurt, but I think, you know, the Lord has a plan for us, and being able to spend that time with my son, it was just, you know, it was the right thing to happen. I think I would've been miserable had I, had I won, you know, and not been able to be, spend those, you know, first years with him, you know.
Things happened for a reason, and I'm glad you were blessed that way. And when did you decide, "You know what? I'm gonna go back in, and I'm gonna throw my name in the hat for commissioner"?
And I really was. I was worn out at the time, after the eight years. It was kind of six years, and we started getting a little tedious and stuff, and I don't remember what exactly what was going on, but it was kind of like, okay, well, there's so many things going on in my life, you know, this is getting above, and we, you know, unfortunately made that push to go on, and it didn't work out, and I guess, you know, again, for good reason. But, you know, I had that time to join my family, and then the bugs started coming back, and, you know, watching what was going on in the county, not liking the way the fiscal house was, the way that things were being run, and so I decided at that time, you know, I needed to get back in.
To get back inside. When you, when you came inside, what was the first thing that said, "You know what? This is what I'm gonna change"? And did you accomplish it?
Well, it was, it's such a stark difference from the city, you know. I've always had the saying that the county government is the Wild West, it's, it's a gentleman's agreement but with no gentleman, you know, because it just takes three votes to get anything done. And you can overturn this and overturn that. It's not, if you don't have the ordinance power, you don't have all those things where you have to have five or 100 votes, you know, three votes, and then the next day you could have three votes override, that was three votes. And so it was just a stark change. Accountability, that was the first thing, you know, no balanced budgets. When I got there the first couple of years, I think we were hiring 50 people a year. I think it was for three years in a row, just kind of, and just, and no balanced budget. We were always overdrawn when we started the year, and, you know, miraculously we kind of made it up during the year, and it's like, something's not right here, so we just kept digging and digging. Accountability with employees, you know, heard all this talk about phantom employees, and obviously we did have some. We implemented what's called Time Clock Plus, which is a biometric hand scanner, and so you no longer had to sign in with a code, you'd have to go put your hand in. Now, that didn't say you could put your hand in and walk out the door, you know, you could do that, but you had to physically show up, sign in, and then it'd keep tracking it. So as soon as we implemented that, we had a lot of resignations, we had some people, you know, quit and things like that.
Oh, for sure. And it's just done through all the departments, or is it just...
All the departments.
Okay. Do they enter the county courthouse and just put their hand in each other's hands?
Yeah. At some place, like some of the outliers, we have just the thumb scanners, because, again, like you were mentioning here, the biometric, I mean, the internet speed to be able to uplink all that, to be able to do the scans. And so, yeah, it's, and it's, it keeps track, it really, it's a very valuable tool because it keeps accurate records for the employee about his time, comp time, time off, vacation, all that, it records it. So you're not relying on the administrator, whoever it is, to record it properly. So you know what you got in there is what's in there.
That's, absolutely, that's great. You know, and you need to, and there's another thing that, when, I don't know, when you, I think you were already there, was it, the employment was different now? Before it was at will, and now it's civil service, correct?
Civil service started just before I got there. We're still refining that, you know, going through, it's not a learning curve, but it's a good thing for the employee, because, you know, they don't, you get these new administrations that come in all the time, you know, and in the old days, it just wipe 'em out, start over, you know, and that's not fair to the employee. The employee needs to know that they're, as long as they're doing their job, they should be safe.
They should be protected.
Yeah. And so that's why, you know, it's only the top administrators to each elected official now are the ones... Now, of course, you have different departments that have different degrees, they have exempt employees, and so those employees will not be protected, but for the most part, most of the employees are protected, and they know they have their rights.
Their rights, yeah. That's a big change, that's something that was needed, especially with everything, the way Laredo works, and, you know...
Politics.
Politics, all of a sudden, people were there, and they weren't there the next day, you know, or they played musical chairs. But, but that's great, because that puts up a step forward, we're continuing forward in that direction. We were talking earlier about lawsuits. What lawsuits do we have? What lawsuit are going on with the county?
There are none now. We had, you know, when the county commissioner's court was, you know, putting its foot down and saying, "All right, nope, you know, we've got too many people coming in, we don't have the need for this, we're in control of the budget," because that's the commissioner's court's sole responsibility, is the budget. And so we started saying no to a few people, and they didn't like it, you know, and it was unfortunate, but, you know, we had to go through that exercise, and we went through there. We had one of the DA was trying to change, change his budget, and we said no, and he thought he had the ability, and the court signed with us. We had the tax office, where the director didn't want to put the people on the Time Clock Plus, saying no, that she, you know, she didn't want her office, they wanted to do it by hand, and we said no. Went to lawsuit, won that. What else do we have? We had with the county attorney's office, where we were have, where we ended up creating the civil legal division, because at the time, the county attorney's office was handling all the contracts, all the stuff. Now, the county attorney by statute is the one that does all the juvenile prosecutions and things like that. So it's really not his expertise on doing the contracts and knowing all the stuff that went on. So he wouldn't have to hire attorneys to do that. I said, "Well, in order to be more responsive to commissioner's court," because there was a time lapse there and things, and so we said, "We need to bring that over under commissioner's court, create our own civil legal division, which several counties have." And they sued to stop that, and of course we won. And it's been a blessing, and I think it's a blessing to them too. I think they found out that that's really a better way, we really have no intermingling anymore. They do their job, we do our job, and it's not that we don't talk, but I'm just saying there's, there's no more headaches. And it's really solved. Of course, we have our headaches, you know, trying to get contracts and saying, "All right, what's the best for the county"? You know, we're going over some of those now. Other than that, like I say, it's, it was a, it was a fun year for a while, you know, that kind of screamed out and was saying, "No, this is why there's no unity." I said, "No, there is unity, it's the commissioner's court is being accountable to the taxpayer." We're saying, "Here's what, you know, what, out in the open, what we're doing, this is the best way to save money," and the court's signing with us every single time.
Well, that's great, you know, because that's basically what it's worth, that's what you're explaining. I hear a lot of talk about lifedowns, what's going on with lifedowns? What's, I know that's, that's one of, one of our, how can I say, hearts of the county...
The jewel. It's a jewel, I mean, that's, you know, basically, they let run down, and, you know, it's, we don't know how it happened over the years. They were granted, I think it was called a license at the time, and it wasn't an exclusive license, it was, it was my, my wife's uncle, actually, at the time, was the county judge, and granted this license court, with the commissioner's court, to, I guess, the Life Board, 501(c)(3), to be able to run and do, you know, agri-life, things livestock shows and things like that. But it didn't say exclusive. And through the years, who knows? I remember there used to be a racetrack out there, and I don't know who ran the racetrack or how that worked. But through the years, they kind of just took over the whole thing, but Webb County was always paying the bills, you know, they, they carried all the insurance, all the thing, you know, remember the big storm that came through, like 2000 tore apart the, of the airport, you know, all those buildings came out of Webb County funds being replaced, and then the 200 pavilion down, I think Webb County gave 250,000 for it. So it just kind of evolved over the years, and, like I say, one entity getting all the benefit for it. And we saw no improvements, except for the improvements done by...
By Webb County.
Well, Webb County, or sole benefactors, you know, people donating money, creating, you know, getting that stuff, not the life people itself. You got a new board that wanted to work with us, and, you know, this is something we looked at, and I thought from the very beginning, was we needed to get control back, create the, you know, redo the entity, and then rebuild it. And so we're in the, we're in the process of looking at what we can afford to build to make it a nice place where you will enjoy taking your family and seeing new events, new kind of different environments. We're hoping to, you know, maybe X Games, some kind of different motocross, motor, you know, road race, dirt track racing, whatever it is, I know that there was a concept about bringing NASCAR. Whatever we can bring, I'm for it, you know. Let's, let's see what we can bring. I'm all for all those things. Anything that we can bring different to expose our children, to expose, to give us a quality of life issue where we can go out, you know, "Hey, let's go see the mud races, let's go see the dirt track races, let's see the horse races," whatever it may be.
You know, and that's what needs to happen. And that's, you know, that's, that's what's happened in Laredo. You have a lot of these little agencies that all of a sudden that are backed up, that become kind of like a de facto little boss, and they, but they're, they're the ones taking care of it, they run it down, and everybody else is the one that's paying for it, and that has to stop.
Yeah.
We have to put our foot down somewhere.
And so I think you've seen the commissioner's court has been very, very open. I know people complain about it, but I'm saying, it's, I think it's all there. We, you know, from day one, it was all about accountability, you know, I had different issues at the time, but all those things have been worked out. It all works very well, like I say, and it's very transparent.
It's changed a bit?
It's changed a lot. It's changed a lot.
For the better.
Yeah.
Here's something else that's always echoing, the colonias, and what's going on with the colonias, and people, you know, living in third world country, and that type of environment, and what's actually going on? I think you're the one that can actually tell us exactly.
Well, the problem is you have so many different sectors throughout Webb County. You know, I forget, it was like 100 and something different colonias that were there, you know, and there were just land that was sold at one time, you know, Pobli Ranchito, maybe it was, you know, before that, they were selling them as places to live, but, you know, none of them provided water, you know, water's a precious resource here, and Webb County is not well covered with groundwater. So a lot of these, except for like the Botinas area and northern northwest Webb County, where you do have some groundwater, most of the people are out of luck. So it's not like most counties where you see all these suburbs all over the place, because people can go drill a well and have good water. So there were soldiers, weekend, you know, retreats or whatever it may be, or Ranchito. Then the legislature took over and passed some laws and regulations, and stopped the subdivision of these type of things, and the proliferation of them, but we're stuck here. You know, the people are living out there, some people like that kind of life, you know, they're out there, but they demand services, but they're not entitled to those services. So that's where you're kind of at a, at a tipping point, you know, that they're not entitled to water, you're here in town, you have to pay a water bill, right?
Sure.
And you have to pay your connection and all the other stuff. Out there, you know, they've looked at, I think Benitas was the only one where they did a study and said, "All right, for X millions of dollars, we can bring water to these people," but they charged it to those people. You know, there was a grant for part of it, but they said, "Now, we're gonna bring you water, and you must connect, and you must pay this fee to connect." So they did that study over here in Las Lomas, which is an area, of course, that's 17 miles, I think, or 14 miles from the closest water, water line. So the, the grant, I don't remember what the numbers came out, but, you know, it just didn't work. So we just have to charge those people a horrific amount of money. But, so we struggled with those issues. The county, at some time, decided, "Well, let's provide this water dispenser." Well, we're hauling water from the city of Laredo, and, you know, I'm just using numbers, this is, they buy it for a dollar a gallon, and we're selling it for 10 cents a gallon. Well, how does that make sense to the taxpayer? You know, we're providing service and losing money. Same thing we're doing with a real water plant, that doesn't make sense, you know. We should not be in the water business. It's not a mandate for county businesses. We wish somebody would buy that from us, but it's been a pain, and we pumped in, since I've gotten there, we've pumped in millions and millions of dollars into that treatment plant, and the water plant in Deolavo, and it's probably one of the best plants, you know, in Texas now, as far as that, because they actually have to treat their water to a much higher standard than the city of Laredo, and since they're downstream of the city intake. And so, you know, it's a fine line, garbage pickup, you know, we, county offers garbage pickup, was doing it for free there for a while, again, then you get a lawsuit, or people, you know, talking about suing, and saying, "Hey, you cannot provide this for free." You know, it's not a mandate. And so we started looking, you know, you have jurisdictional things, we were doing it in the ETJ from the city, and so that you got, started looking at the squabble there, "Okay, can we have permission now to pick up into ETJ"? And all the things that by statute has to be agreed to. And so we looked at it, said, "Okay, now we're gonna..." We tried to move to a private provider, it didn't look like nobody wanted to really do it, so we, we continue. And then you have the third issue is private roads. County government cannot operate on any private roads. And so we've been asking the citizens out there that live in those areas to donate right away to create public roads, so we can actually get in there and, you know, create a road, go in there and give them trash service and different things, and the majority of them don't want it, and so we can't force them to.
Sure.
And so, but we have some projects ongoing there in Centenarios. We did Centenarios in Huatito, where all the, the majority of people have donated, and so we've created a road in there, and we're experimenting with some different products to be able to create a road that looks like a blacktop road, but it's caliche infused with a petroleum product, holds the road together very well, makes it an all-weather road, you know, not dusty. And it's working very well, so we hope that would incentivize them to say, "All right, look, look what happens if you donate." And we are, we're getting, you're seeing more and more, it's starting to, it's starting to ball, starting to roll a little faster. But, you know, we have, I think, 380 miles of county road now, I mean, I don't know how many miles of, you know, private road that are out there throughout the colonias. So it's quite a project, and the road and bridge can only do so much at a time. And so we're looking, you know, we upped road and bridge by 300,000 this year to be able to do that, what we call a taping project, you know, to get that going. And again, we're trying to find the right ratios, because we're experimenting with that thing to see what, how it works in different environments, because you go to one part, you have, you know, caliche mixed with clay, and you know, you go in the western part, you have caliche mixed with sand, and so it doesn't, it works in different ways. So you have to add more, take away more, and all the, the actual construction itself, we're just trying to figure out. Then with the truck traffic, you know, when you got the 18-wheeler, you know, the oil field traffic, it just destroys those roads.
Can some of the oil field, or oil actually help, help in the building of that, those roads, or not?
You know, back when it was first building, yeah, they were all for it, and then from, after it crashed, no more help. But, you know, it does help on the, on the tax side, because we do get the benefit from the mineral evaluations. So we are blessed there, and so we've been doing very well.
Now, we talked about water on being a precious...
Resource, yeah.
Resource. Well, we've been looking at second water resource for the county, or...
No, that's, I mean...
That something for the city?
That was something for the city, that was something that I was very in favor for, you know, I, I, I thought we had the deal worked out when I left. Like I said, we had all the bonding capacity. We were talking at the time, a 60-inch water line coming from, I can't remember, it was Dimon or Maverick County. And you gotta remember, this was before the Eagle Ford, and it was gonna be a take-or-pay contract. This was before the Pico Water Plant was done, this was actually even before Jefferson Water Plant was reconstructed. And it would've come in through the north, you know, probably down 83 or 1472, and come into the northern Webb County, or northern city of Laredo, and we would've sold a ton of water to the oil companies. And I think you would've seen more, I don't wanna say colonial, but you would've seen more subdivisions breaking off along wherever the core was, because there would be water. All of a sudden, in the areas that you had, do have land available, you would see people cut up, like, you know, say it was La Moca or whatever, all of a sudden, those people have water. But that's gone now. Once they built the El Pico, they killed any chance. I mean, I still sit on that committee, I mean, I just got reappointed a while back, and we studied it and tried to see if there's a way, because that was a charge, and there's just no way. I mean, unless you wanna triple your water rates, because it's a take-or-pay contract. You know, Jefferson, I forget what the numbers are, I wanna say it's 20 million gallons a day that they have, I'm sorry, Pico, I think that they have to produce just to, to open that plant up. And so where's this water gonna go? You know, where are you gonna take it? It's just, they tell me now that we're in, they're saying, "Sounded the same amount of water as they did in 2007 with 15,000 more customers in the city of Laredo because of conservation." And so it screwed up their rates. They figured they were gonna have 15,000 more customers, they're gonna have all this extra money, but at the same time, they promoted conservation, so their revenue stream really shrank. So now they got 15,000 new customers and no additional revenue.
And it's gonna, and it's gonna multiply in the next two years and so on, so it's gonna go forward.
Well, now they're, they're stuck right now, so that's why you saw where they wanted to double the water rates again, and, you know, we asked to kind of step back, and let's look at the whole picture, see what's going on, and I think what's happened is, you're seeing that the city of Laredo was charging utility company like a 5% administration fee. Well, all that money being siphoned off leads to this, you know, either, you know, water lines here, howl this hillside now.
Sure.
You know, it was done in the 70s, water line expectancy's 30 to 40 years.
Oh, here you have problems.
Yeah. The heights, I mean, the job are, plantation, all of that's old already.
And it's all, it's right for, that's right for new water.
Yeah.
Yeah, and well, new water lines, you're, you're exactly right. I mean, we're, we like move forward but take steps back. You know what I mean? We like move forward five and then jump back 10, you know, then you...
And then when you replace the line, what do you have to do? You have to redo the street. You know, and so they're in a big line. I'm glad I'm not at the city right now, because they have some issues that need addressing, and it's gonna take some, some firm cutting to get it done.
Yeah. And it's gonna be, it's gonna be a good one.
Yeah.
And, you know, many, many say that Laredo's at a tipping point, that it might fall and not get back up.
Well, I don't think that's gonna happen. I think, you know, the people will step up, well, you know, we just need to look at the candidates and go, and I think, you know, there's some people there that wanna do the right thing, let's, you know, we just need to get a lot of people together and say, "All right, what is it, how, you know, address the problem." You just gotta kind of step back, analyze the whole problem, say, "All right, where is it coming?" You know, remember that the city went on a park building binge for, for 10 years now, I guess, or whatever, and, you know, so maybe that's why they need to stop that, go back, but the problem is now you always have maintenance of those things, so. The, this, the water issue needs to be addressed, and I mean, the easiest way is just, "Okay, let's just build a customer." But that's not...
You're only gonna build them so much.
You're only gonna build so much. Like I said, they're gonna see the conservation, the conservation, and people are gonna shrink back and shrink back. back and shrink back and shrink back, and, and so, like I said, they need to take a step back at the big picture, I know there's been a, a, a fight against impact fees, I don't know what, what it is, but they're gonna have to go back and look at the broad picture and say, whatever it is, water availability, funds, impact fees, different kinds of structures, where you're not only putting it on the rate payer, because it's just not right.
And it's messing up, if it continues, you're gonna see a big change. I think it's not only here in, in Laredo, I think it's across the United States as well.
You know, and Laredo, I think, is, is one of the only cities that doesn't actually get credit for the water, you know, they process all the water, they bring back, they clean the water, they put it back into the Orona. And so, for their, uh, you know, we talked about it for, for many years, but I don't think we've ever gotten it done, is to get some kind of legislation to get credit for that water that's put back into the Orona. Or to sell it downstream to the farmers or whoever it may be down, you know, but they don't pay much, that's the problem, it's just not a big money generator. But if we didn't return that water, let's just say we built a new reservoir, and put it in a reservoir, because I don't think we're mandated to return it. So, maybe we should be storing that water after we treat it, and build a huge lake or something, and say, keep that water, and then see what would happen, you know, because then the, the farmers would have a, whatever it is, fifteen million gallons of water per day
Or another, or another, or more lives would have water, you know what I mean?
Yeah.
So, I mean, it'd be, it'd be a little bit different, you know, because that's a good idea for the reservoir, let's keep that water.
Yeah, it's something we've talked about for a long time, upstream, downstream, you know, we always have, uh, more water rights than we have, so we don't use them as they go, if the water goes by at the end of the year, hey, you could pump that water into our reservoir, and store it. And then, maybe it's recreation, you know, choke canyon or type thing, you know? There's some beautiful canons up in Northwest West County, you know, I don't know if, you know, to get the dam, and, you know, what, how many millions it would cost to do that, you know, we talked about bringing, uh, taking even stormwater, you know, going back towards Lake Casablanca to make sure, keep Lake Casablanca almost a constant level lake, you know, different types of things, because, you know, you go see this canal here, that's always, always got water running down, right? Secata Creek, put the weirs in there to back it up, make it kind of a San Antonio River, you know, again, with the water, spare water rights, maybe get to, all it takes is millions of dollars. So, they're all projects, but, you know, it's just what, if you can get multiple benefit from one project, you know, whether it's extra storage, you know, a secondary source of water, whatever it may be, case of lean times, then it's got benefit. You know, and you can really analyze the numbers.
Now, but here goes another one. What do you wanna see for West County in the, in the next five years, ten years? Let's go ten years. What do you wanna see for West County? Where, where do you project West County at?
Well, what I'd like to see is, you know, this paving product, project go on, uh, all our county roads into either a chip seal, or it's a different, you know, form of paving, you know, get out there to where it's truly all-weather roads. Uh, I think everything else is, is humming along pretty well, uh, you know, the new tax cap came in, is gonna go into effect next year. Uh, I think we're gonna be very strong coming into this year, going into next year. It's gonna be a couple of years before you really see that starting to tighten up, uh, on, on, not only counties, but cities. I don't remember how exactly the school districts are gonna be handled, I know the city's gonna have a hard time with that cap, and I think most cities are gonna have a hard time with that cap. Uh, we have what we call longevity pay. We have about eighty million dollars just in payroll per year. And so, uh, you know, we do a one point two-five percent increase on an annual basis as a longevity pay. So, just doing that, you know, we're, we're talking a million plus dollars every year. So, if we're limited to a three million dollar increase, they're one million something, plus whatever mandates come down the road. So, we have to be very, very fiscally responsible, uh, I think we've done that. Oh, insurance was a huge hit. You know, that was, that was hitting us like we were negative three million dollars a year for a while. And it hit us like three years in a row, we were going into the, into the general fund. And, you know, just went in there, stepped back, look at the whole picture, get in there, we changed providers, we had to change, uh, you know, from the Mercedes plan to the Chevy plan, you know? And, uh, and then educate our, our, uh, our employees. We had a person there, Alex Colasidas, who actually did a very good job of going in there and telling them that they had a vested interest on looking, you know, uh, out for the best price, you know, because if they all search for good pricing, then everybody benefits, our low, our, our rates are going, I mean, our cost is going down. So, this year, we're actually looking to go back and do, not a refund, but to lower the employee portion of the contribution, because we've really, it's, the, the costs have just gone down and down and down, because the employee has bought in to the program and saying, all right, well, if I go to, you know, X place, it's a thousand dollars for MRI, or I can go over here and get this MRI for six hundred, or go over here for four hundred. And they said, all right, well, let me get it for the six hundred even, you know? That savings is now gonna be passed on back to the employee. So, that's, uh, it's a very good thing. But it, it was a, it was a hard bullet to bite, you know, they were, they were screaming and yelling, I said, but we, we can't afford to pay all the insurance. You know, so, it was really, it was a tough time, but like I said, we got all that up, we're in really, really good shape, uh, I don't forecast, I've seen, you know, needing too many employees, the only thing that we've been, uh, doing is, uh, the sheriff's office, maybe, where we, we kinda, um, came to agreement, like, five, six people, I think, six people a year for, for five years in a row, so thirty people, we, we did a study and they were under, understaffed. And then what we've been concentrating on lately is vehicles. We had, we have cars a hundred thousand miles, two hundred thousand miles, so we just, we did anything with ninety thousand miles, we're turning them over. We just delivered forty-four cars to the sheriff's office, we're doing all of it, all our vehicles, we want a leasing program. It's because county government's very strange, you know, the way they, they make you go through the system, it's not economical. So, purchasing, you have to go through, let's just say, I have a vehicle with the county, well, I have my own budget for that vehicle, and I have to take it, I will take it to road bridge, and then say, all right, well, first, they would do the analysis, what is it, you want an oil change? Okay, now, do you have money for an oil change? They would check my budget. Yes, I have money, okay, now, let me go buy the filter, come back, then I do it, then they charge. It's a very archaic system, the way it's done. So, we went into a leasing program with all the regular maintenance in there and extended warranty. So, road bridge has to do nothing anymore, except, you know, we do tire rotations and things like that. And it's saved there, and it's saved on the vehicles, and now these guys are getting new vehicles much more often. And so, it's, it's been a great program for us.
So, it's, it's stuff that benefits the taxpayer, though, right?
It all benefits the taxpayer, because again, it's, it's not our money, it's your money, it's the taxpayer's money. A little girl asked me that when we were having it at the, at the Alpharetta, she goes, fine, you know, I was questioning, they, they wanted fifty thousand dollars for water heaters at the juvenile center. I'm saying, that's crazy, you know, I can't just approve that. And I said, you know, I just bought a hundred and twenty gallon water heater, you know, gas water heater, and I wanna say it was, I don't know, six hundred or eight hundred dollars. I said, how could it be so much now? When you get into an architect's specified brand, you know, this brand works with that, yeah, okay, well, I wanna buy this, this French water heater that nobody has here, then you gotta go buy it over there. Yeah, you can see, for three water heaters, fifty thousand dollars, but, I said, well, can we retrofit, you know, can we put insta-heats in there, can we do this? And do it, I think we ended up doing it for like twenty grand. You know, so those are the kinds of challenges, that, you know, you just need to have somebody step back and say, wait a minute, wait a minute, these are crazy prices, you know? And so, unfortunately, I've been in the construction industry, I've been in, in so many different things throughout my field of life, uh...
So, it gives you an idea, you know?
Yeah.
And when, and when you step into stuff like this, a lot of, a lot of people are gonna say, oh, yeah, well, that's, that's a project with the county, and poke them in the eye.
Yeah.
You know, that's, that's very surprising, you know, California.
Yeah, and you know, it's, it's true, like I said, you, you do something, and, well, you know, the architect's allowed to make so much, the engineer's allowed to make so much, and it's like, come on, you know, whereas the private sector, I know I can build this building for a million dollars and take the county two and a half. And so, that's not right. Now, there are certain things, okay, they have to be bonded, you know, they have to be insured, those are things that you want, because there are some things that come back at you. But not, you know, double and triple the costs, and so, and that's what worries me about lifedowns. Uh, you know, there's a project there, and it's a project that's needed, but I wanna make sure that we're not taking advantage of it.
In, in lifedowns, is a project gonna go in front of the commissioner's court, or is it lifedowns, the board?
No, 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 it's commissioner's court.
So, it's commissioner's court that's gonna say, this is what we want, this is what's gonna happen? So, the board of lifedowns has nothing to do with it, right?
No. No, it came, like I said, there, there was a, a master plan done, which I was not very happy with, and I don't really think it's a master plan, they don't show, you know, part of the, I said, you know, hey, well, let's, show me where I can have a mud track, show me where we can have motocross, show me where we can have this, you know, the equestrian center, and they said, well, maybe here, maybe, I said, no, that is not a master plan. You know, if I don't know where everybody's gonna go, you know, then, then it's not a master plan, well, so, anyway, they came up with a thing, and then they come up with a number of ninety million dollars, well, the county can't afford ninety million dollars, and I don't think the public wants ninety million dollars. You know, I was thinking twenty, thirty, but, you know, now we're, we're looking at phasing it, but now, what's gonna be in the phase? You know, I think there's, uh, multiple buildings there that, that could be done, could be used. Uh, I, I really think we could do the project for about thirty million dollars in phase one, which the county can handle right now, I don't think anything more than that, I think we would be hurting ourselves, walking into the, the new cap that's coming in. Um, but there's an internal fight going on, what, what's gonna be built in phase one. Uh, I think this is a very good opportunity for the city to come in with us, um, you know, they have some needs for baseball fields, they have, uh, needs for different things. And I said, you know, the arena tax, I think that could be well-used here. You know, we, we'd hope to, because that tax is, you know, is a quarter sale on the sales tax, that goes across the board, everybody who pays sales tax, it's not to the taxpayer, just the residents of West County. So, I think that could be used. Um, you know, in there, there is a multipurpose facility, which is a civic center, the city's looking for a new civic center, so guys, build it here. You know, we're already gonna have the parking spaces, we've already got the land, you know, build it, and we'll figure out some kind of revenue sharing or whatever, whatever it may be. And I said, you know, their big thing is, is M and O, and I said, well, build it, and we'll cover the M and O, and, uh, if, if there's ever a profit, then we share the profits, you know, but more likely, there won't be. There won't be a, a, a profit on lifedowns, you know? It's just, just like the arena, there's not a profit on the arena. At least that's covered, and here it's not covered, and that's what I wanna make sure, we gotta, we gotta minimize the impact on taxpayer, and maximize the ability to have great projects, make sure that kids can go, families can go, whatever it may be.
You know, and, um, there's a lot of fairs that have done, you know, Yakuza and Hulu, and there's a lot of stuff that we're missing out on expanding. And I think we should start reaching out more, not only here, we reach more towards the valley and San Antonio and everybody else, and to start drafting those people in. I think we can, we can have that type of tourism.
There, no doubt, I mean, there's, you know, just the life board in two years have expanded that thing like crazy, you know, and putting boards, have wonderful concerts and kinds of things like that. Uh, with, with this new facility, I think it's gonna be great, you know, we're, we're gonna, we're making a deal with all the five oh one C threes, you know, we'll go in there for free, uh, or some kind of limited, maybe just the parking or security, whatever it may be, we're trying to iron those, those things out. But the vanilla bowl, again, is gonna be a much nicer facility, hopefully, when it's done, uh, the life fair, uh, you know, jambuzy, jalapeno, whatever it may be, you know, jalapeno, not jambuzy, jambuzy downtown. But, uh, you heard the new song about Laredo, Tanya Tucker? She recorded a
No, no.
A song, and Streets of Laredo, or Wheels of Laredo or something, and actually talks about jambuzy and the Rio Grande, and talking about being downtown, and I was surprised that she included all that stuff. But anyway, there, yeah, there is, uh, it's a great opportunity, and again, to be able to expose our kids, let them gain that knowledge, get that dream, and then come back to Laredo and make Laredo a better place.
You see, that's, that's what happens, a lot, a lot of, a lot of Laredo ones graduate, go to college, graduate, there's a large percentage that comes back. A large percentage.
Spring drain, that's what you call it, when they don't come back, it's spring drain.
And, you know, when they come back, and then all of a sudden, you know, people complain, but yet you come back to Laredo, so we have to make Laredo
Has to be
Be Laredo proud, that's what we're
Something they wanna do, and that's someplace, I've always wanted to live here, you know, I love visiting other places, but I always wanna come home.
You remember the old billboard that you sent over there, you should say, keep the buck in Laredo?
Remember that?
That's what we have to do. And we have everything here. We have the physicians, we have the lawyers, we have dentists, we have everybody, see?
Well, we have more physicians.
But, you know, you have, you have everybody, it says, no, we go to San Antonio, because, no, we have the great physicians, see, we have good lawyers. It's just a matter of being proud of our city.
Yeah. Which I am, I'm very proud, like I said, I think we've done this, and, you know, I'm surprised, I still feel energized, I wanna do one more term, I think, you know, at least, get this done, and, uh...
Let's, let's go, let's go into the, the new term. Let's say God says, you know what? Okay, we're putting you in there again, okay, you want, what do you wanna tack, what do you wanna finish? You wanna say, you know, this is what I wanna tackle, this is what
Again, yeah, we, we kinda brushed on that, but I said, I wanna see the roads project being done, I'd like to see, you know, all the, you know, three hundred and eighty miles of county road being some sort of all-weather, you know, if not paved, or all-weather, then you wanna continue to see the expansion of, of all the services. You know, the problem is, the commissioner's court, we don't have any, any say over any other elected official, they're, all elected officials are on the same plane.
Sure.
So, I can't tell the tax assessor collector, or I can't tell, you know, the sheriff, or any, and vice versa, they can't tell us what to do. Only thing we can do is control their budget. You know, and we say, all right, you have enough people, you don't have enough people, you know, uh, you need a new facility, let us build it for you, whatever. So, we wanna see that, make sure that we have first-class, you know, service to the consumer, you know, taxpayers out there, you know, the courts, because we're not, you know, a lot of these things are not to make money. Court services not to make money, the tax assessor's not to make money, you know, it's how you collect revenues and things, but, uh, all the services, pre-trial services, you know, intelligent defense, you know, intelligent care, all those things, there's just, uh, very few things that would generate money. And so, we have these mandates, and the only way we have at this time is, is taxes. So, we, I just wanna see that go forward and make sure that we can provide the best service we can at that time.
How about, well said. Um, how about, um, things that do make money, like the jail, like, um, like the bridge, new bridge? How, how's that new bridge coming along?
The new bridge is, nothing coming along now.
Is it gonna be, do you think it's gonna end up being a partnership of the city, or it's gonna go by themselves, or?
Might be.
How is it?
Well, in my opinion, I mean, and just, just me speaking, I would forego, I'd like to get something out of it, of course, but I, I would say that, you know, the, the city's in the bridge business, it, it's a, uh, they already have it all turnkey, you know, they have a system down, it's all inter, I mean, They have a system down, it's all, I mean, it's all wrapped into one. It makes it very difficult for them to have a partner in just one bridge, you know? So, I would say, I like the South area, I think it makes sense. And we have the ability now to set aside a large tract of land, get all the infrastructure done, you know, if through proper planning. Anywhere else, it's gonna be kind of difficult to do. You know, you could be limited on infrastructure and the build-out that you need to do it properly. Again, I think the city's in that business, let them run it, let them take, you know, the expense. I don't think the county can afford the expense, truth, you know? If we, because when you first build that bridge, whether it's five years from now or twenty years from now, all you're doing is you're gonna be stealing the majority of the customers from the other bridges. They're just gonna say, okay, it's more convenient to go over here, we'll go over here. You're not creating new traffic, and new traffic's gonna take time to build up. So, you're stealing from this hand to pay, put it in this hand. And the county is gonna have to be paying that, you know, portion, whether the traffic's generated or not. So, I don't think we need to be in the bridge business, just like we don't need to be in the wastewater business.
It's like that new corridor that's opening up from, what is it? Far and other areas that's gonna connect, what's that spur called?
I sixty-nine?
I sixty-nine.
Yeah, we have our I sixty-nine, which is highly fifty-nine.
Correct. That's gonna take away a lot of traffic from a bridge.
If we do.
You know, and if we build the bridge, we have to basically do it now before they eat our lunch. In a way, you know what I'm saying? What do you think about that?
I agree, like I said, I think it needs to be decided at this time where that bridge is gonna be. And again, to decide who's gonna be operating the bridge. As I say, I wholeheartedly think the city should do it. Being on both sides of the strip, you know, I know what it is. Like I said, they run a very good bridge system, they know the ins and outs of how that's supposed to be done. And I really don't wanna be on the negative financing side of that bridge, you know? Because it's not gonna be a moneymaker for a while, you know? Just like when they built Columbia Bridge, you know? Who was the governor at the time that, you know, it's gonna be here, whether you want it or not? Okay, well, we don't wanna be outside the city, so they took it, annexed all the way over there. And I think, I'm not sure if the numbers do generate now to work pace for itself or not. But, you know, so, it had to be subsidized by the rest of the system. And so, this is gonna have to be subsidized, but it's an infrastructure need. And I think it's gonna protect the city's number-one status. And it's, you know, sometimes you gotta spend money, whether it's to redo your, you know? You look at the fast food places, every ten years, you know, they're gonna redo the facade. It's not a moneymaker, it's not gonna make you generate, but you have to keep up. And so, I think this is something the city has to do, keep up, to make sure that we are competitive, or the most competitive, you know? So, that's more than that, but I'm a willing partner with them to say, you know, how do we get it done? And I think I like that site over there personally.
Great. Well, anything else you'd like to tell anybody else out here?
Well, it's just been interesting, I appreciate the time this morning, I appreciate...
Oh, thank you, thank you for coming out and expressing the views. And it's always great to sit back and listen, because a lot of folks do not understand how it works. Everybody can point fingers from the outside, but you really don't know how it works, you know? And it's good to see from a different perspective.
Yeah, and, you know, I like being very, again, we talked about transparency earlier, and I said that I like to be transparent to meetings, and I ask a lot of questions. And I go there because it's not only for meetings, it's for the public. Because those same questions the public has, so why are you doing this? Why is this going on? And, you know, some of my colleagues say, hey, you talk too much. I said, well, because I wanna know, and the public wants to know. And if I don't ask these questions, it's boom, boom, goes through, and like, what happened? You know, why do y'all do this? No, let's talk about it. And I'm telling them reasons, some of the time I do need to know the answers. I said, why is this going this way? Oh, because X, Y, Z, alright, so everybody can understand that. It surprises me how many people watch the shows, you know? Go back and watch city council, watch commissioner's court, you know that? And I get people all the time just coming to me, and hey, you know, thank you for doing this, thank you for doing that. I was like, wow, you know, I look at them, I said, you watch the shows? It's like, I don't know if I can bring myself to watch those shows. I have to say to them, of course, I've never watched them, unless I'm looking for an item, you know, that we passed or whatever. But I appreciate the time that the public has allowed me to be here. I honor it, I cherish it, and I hope they will give me one more chance.
Well, God wills it, you'll be there. And it's gonna be good, it's gonna be good. I think, you know, seeing the different commissioners in the past eighteen years. I think now everybody's kind of like, okay, let's move, let's move in one direction, you know? You know what I mean? The city, for a while, everybody's all over the place, and now it's kind of getting here. But the county already has that.
Yeah.
And I think the county has it, and like you said, and all the rest of the public officials are out there all over the place. But I think some of them are falling in line, saying, yeah, now we understand what this is all about.
Well, I think, you know, a lot of that's due to Tino's leadership, but I think he's given everybody, you know, direction and asked them, you know, what is it you wanna accomplish? Same thing, he kind of said, here, and here's where our goals. And he goes, let's move forward, let's go in a cohesive way, let's not kind of get off into the weeds, let's kind of stay, you know, on the path, and we've all done that. And I think, you know, I appreciate his support and stuff, you know? We don't always agree on everything, nobody always does.
Sure.
You know, and I said, I've seen some things, you know, in my lifetime to see where, you know, don't work. Seen other things, you know, but I get surprised all the time, I say, wow, you know, hey, hockey in Laredo, who would it's at, you know?
And it went well, it went well, but, you know, a lot of people still, you know? I think the consensus, when I talk, I talked to one of the councilmen, and I said, the consensus of the citizens is that most of the city leaders have lost their citizens out there. Their citizens are looking at, what are you guys doing? Okay, what you read on social media, you're like, I go back in there and I'll read what, you know, what people post, and I go back and I go, when you see how much of stuff in here, you've got a couple of things here. Number one, they don't understand the government, they do not understand what goes on behind there. Or they've seen something that it's not to their liking, okay? Some people there that have been around for a while post something up there, then you start paying attention. And I always say, a lot of public officials that come up, and they say, no, they're just haters, they're just haters. Wait a minute, you have to understand this about the hater. They're your number-one fan, because they're following you everywhere, everything that you do. They're your number-one fan. You understand what I'm saying? They're the ones that's looking at, well, wait a minute, he didn't have a tie on. Wait a minute, he didn't do this with me. There's something that they're trying to tell you. So, step back and listen to it, because all of a sudden, you might say, well, you know what? I didn't think of that. If I change that, all of a sudden, you have a bunch of new friends, you know? It's like in the school yard tussle, you know? They threw a ball, they put something, and all of a sudden, you end up in a fight, and all of a sudden, you end up becoming friends. And that's just the way it is.
Social media is a different animal. You just see all these lies, people just lie, outright lie. It's like, how could you say that, you know? You don't know, and, oh, this guy stole this, and this guy...
And it's corruption, the federal judiciary, oh, it's corrupt, oh, this is corrupt, oh, they're corrupt. Well, enough told, you have some proof of corruption. There's an agency here called the Texas, call them. If they pay attention to you, then you might be right. But if not, you know, please shut up, you know, you don't understand.
It's amazing, you know, like I said, they just go out there and put their stuff. But, no, we go out there, you know, I'm not a social media fan, it's probably to my detriment. I'm not, you know, I'm more about projects, and that's one of my ideas. I think it's not, you know, going out there and just keeping, you know, keeping the beauty project going all the time, you know? Because that's, I view myself as a public servant, not as a politician. I hate politics, I don't like, you know, I'm trying to get something done in a coherent way, in an efficient way, that benefits all the public. And that's why I said, it's a public servant, and for that, that only. And if they will it, they don't want it, that's fine. You know, I have a very good life, I have a great wife, I have a great son, I have a great job, you know, family and job and things. I don't need this, I'm just doing it because I think I can do a better job than most people there.
Or have an idea that can wake people up and say, you know what? Hey, let's look at this idea, because it might work, you know what I'm saying? It'll be, or it's a lot better to work.
And I don't care who gets the credit, you know? I just want, as long as we can all, like, bring this idea in, great. Like I said, if NASCAR worked, I'm all for it. If we can get dirt track, I'm all for it. If we can get it to work, I'm all for it, you know? Whatever project, it doesn't have to be my idea in no way, you know, we get them all. Commissioner Leandro just came in, and she had this project with Martin High School, and it was basically bringing Webb County there, exposing all the kids, okay? What can you be, can you be a firefighter? Can you be civil legal? And it really turned out well. And so, from her idea, now we're gonna expand it county-wide, you know? And it was really, really well, and Martin, you know, Principal Pro, whatever, facilitated, pushed it hard, and it opened up the eyes of their kids. And that's what we need to...
You know, you touched something there, and so, and thumbs up for Commissioner Leandro for doing that, okay? Because we need folks to step up, because we're losing our kids from senior to freshman to sophomore in college, okay? From there, we're, all of a sudden, we're getting people that are in debt, okay? Why? Because they go into college, and I'll say, okay, I'm gonna go into psychology. Well, you don't have the iota of what's going on in there. All of a sudden, they're digging a hole. And if we could, our high school, that's why I like early college and the magnet schools and everything else, because it gives those kids, they already have hours towards your college in some of these programs that UISD and LISD have done. And if we start teaching them, you know what? Here's a vocation, or here's a, or here's a profession you didn't look at. All of a sudden, they say, wait a minute, yeah, I like that. And all of a sudden, you can find it, and that's what it's all about.
About the profession, and that's what she showed them there, and they said, alright, hey, I don't need to go to a four-year degree, man, I can go over here to, you know, LC and get this degree, or, you know, whether it's nursing, or I wanna be in criminal justice, or I wanna be, you know, legal secretary, whatever it is, you know? They open their eyes and say, hey, these are good-paying jobs. Here in Laredo, I can make sure I can take care of my family, because my auntie lives with me, or whatever, my mom's getting up there in age, I can't be in, you know, San Antonio because I gotta, you know, take care of them. And they're good-paying jobs. You know, most of our families, you know, we're a pretty tight, thick family unit here in Laredo. You know, we all have generations, yeah, and then we take care of each other. And that's the way it used to be, and that's the way it should be, I think, you know?
And I think that's the specialty of it, that's what separates us from... You know, you see this in some of the other ethnic communities in other cities. And you go to, you know, some Chicago areas, you see the Italians have that, you know? You see the two, three different generations that live in the same neighborhood or, you know, in the same household, and some others like that.
Yeah, the same household. Your grandmother lived with you, but your mom, but your grandmother's the one that took care of you. Your mom was working, dad was working with your grandma, you know? We have so many examples, like I said, and so, again, just opening up kids' eyes to what can you do? And like I said, it was a great, successful program. We wanna, you know, everybody's jumping on the bandwagon and doing the same thing, alright, let's do it with all the high schools, give these kids...
I think we should, that's a great group. And number one, I wanna thank you for coming out.
Thank you, appreciate it very much.
Thank you.
Good luck.
Folks, in summer, there's a lot of kids out there with skateboards and bikes. So, be careful, stop texting and driving, that's number one.
And if this is up before Fourth of July, happy Fourth of July, God bless you.
Be safe.